Okay, we good? Oh, I'm going by the clock on the wall. Let's see. Apple time, apple time since seven. Welcome, everyone. We'll call our town council meeting to order and please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call? Here.
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 Here. Kate, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Maybe, let's see.
I'll talk more into the mic.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so now we're, thank you, Kate, we're on our audience of citizens. If there's anyone here or in our audience wishes to speak on anything on the agenda tonight or anything concerning the town of Burl, and we're happy to hear you at this point in the meeting. Yes, sir. George, yes.
My name's George Millard. I live at 1231 Orchard Road in Kensington. I just wanted to make a comment about one of the items that's on your consent consent agenda. This is the Connecticut Cycling Advancement Program requesting to do a one day race on June 5th, starting and ending in Hatchery Brook. I don't necessarily have an issue with the race. The only thing that I would ask the council to do is sort of add another condition in there, that they make sure that they do appropriate signage throughout the different areas of the parks, letting people know what trails are using. They're going to be running that for quite a while. I think they were something like eight to three o'clock or something like that. There's a lot of intersecting trails there. I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't tell, or I couldn't tell. It says that race route includes riding near bicentennial park. So if they're going to be leaving from Hatchery Brook, I mean, they're basically going through every single park of the trail, maybe with the exception of the Chakowsky property. So they'll be going through the Girl Scout camp, they'll be going through bicentennial. There's a lot of loop trails in there. I mean, the main loop trail in Hatchery Brook is the red trail. It intersects with the yellow trail, it intersects with the blue trail, and I hike there very, very often, and there are some blind spots there. Also, if somebody doesn't know they're there, like they come out of bicentennial, they're walking up on the yellow trail, and all of a sudden four bikes come screaming around the corner, somebody might get hurt. Like, I just think it's appropriate that someone, at the entrance of every every park that they touch, that they have some level of signage there saying, hey, we're going to be on the red trail, wipe the yellow trail, the blue trail, whatever, any other trails they might be on, just as a matter of safety. Thank you.
Hey, George, did you ever go there when they had these past races? Do they have?
I went a number of years ago, probably, I don't think they've done it in a past.
Couple of years, right, yeah.
I mean, I went, I think I would, I went to go over to the park like four years ago and
Yeah.
mobbed.
Okay.
I didn't stay, I mean.
So you never saw what the trails were like, yeah, okay.
They have quite, they had at the time quite a few participants.
Yeah.
I'm just a little concerned. Those trails get a lot of use on a Saturday if it's a nice day.
Sure.
Walkers and they come from all the different locations, Chamberlain Highway, you know, Orchard Road.
Right.
Winesap, there's a couple of other obscure entrances into the park too, so signage I think would be appropriate. Just let people know they're out there, that's all, so nobody gets hurt.
Yes, no, that's a good suggestion, so we'll make sure, Roche, that we get that back to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, George. Anyone else still in the audience of citizens here in person or out in the Zoom audience? Going once, twice? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens. And the mayor's update, so not too much update, we have the affordable housing update tonight, which is great, and then maybe Brendan, could you just give us a little update on the community slash senior center meetings? Okay, well, we'll move on then.
Have some fun. Yeah, we're scheduling, we had a meeting yesterday, we're trying to compile the information that we've gathered, some of the financial data from the town. And trying to compile that and then format, which is easy to read and understand and put a presentation together for the town council. So we're trying to get that done, we're shooting for, you know, April, but if we take a little time on that, we just want to get it right.
Great.
Done with visits and all that kind of stuff, so.
Good.
Good meeting yesterday, everybody has some great ideas on how to pull together what we should add, what we should exclude and work on.
Good, that's great. And did I, was there some, I don't know if it was at the meeting or somewhere, someone mentioned this about, so there is some grant money left for, from the, what was it, I think $750,000 grant that we had initially, we used some already, I think there's 300 and change left, maybe. So some of it, I think we still do owe the architects some money, which we could certainly pay out of that, and I'm wondering, is it, is it possible, whatever might be left in it, because it is a fairly limited purpose, I think, for the planning stages of, you know, whatever we end up doing with the community center, that the town get reimbursed? I don't know if that's something that, because town employees have gone on these field trips, I don't, I don't know if somehow that qualifies, I guess we'd have to look at the grant. Mr. D'Onofrio or what?
You're talking about salaried?
Yeah, they would be salaried town employees, whatever time they might have put in as separate from their normal duties or part of it.
A grant wouldn't.
Wouldn't pay for that, okay.
General overhead.
Okay, okay. Just, just checking to see.
The theory is that they're salaried employees if
So they're
overtime, then.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, all right. Yeah, we'll just see if there's any other thing we would be able to use it for, that just popped up to a couple people, so we will see how that goes. And that's it for my update, so we will close that up and go to our meeting agenda. We have our consent agenda, we have a few items on that, just the three, correct, yes, so we have our topic one is approve the request by the Connecticut Trail Mistress for a trail running race to take place at Ragged Mountain. May 21st, 2022, with the conditions that the applicant works with town staff regarding logistical and safety measures and with the Conservation Commission and trail maintenance after the event. We also have the one that we just were discussing, approve the request by the Burl and High School Riding Red Code Cycling Club and the Connecticut Cycling Advancement for a bike race to take place at Hatchery Brook Conservation Area in June 5th, 2022, with the conditions that the applicants work with the Conservation Commission to assure that the trails are in a condition to accommodate a bike race and that the trails will be fully restored after the race, noticing given to surrounding properties that describe traffic management will be coordinated with the police department and the associated fee waiver for the police services for the event, planning and zoning, and we'll just add to that, that as we mentioned, the signage, make sure that the trails are, which I hope we do that, we should, that they're safe, and that goes with both, both of the events, obviously, that they're safe. For if anyone else happens to be hiking through there, particularly, I guess, with the bicycle race, that they're marked, then we know people would know what time they're maybe coming through or to avoid that particular trail. And then third is accept the donations of $425 and appropriate funds to the supplies expenditure account. So those are the three consent agenda items. I know we've had our packets before, so we've reviewed them and are, at this point, before we take a motion, are there any questions from the counselors or comments?
Mr. Mayor, should we amend it then to number two?
Any conversation about any item, have to remove it from consent.
Can we remove number?
We can do that. Yeah, we can make it. Yeah, we'll vote on number one and three, and we could remove two to the regular agenda. That's what we'll do. So one and three, any comments? No? Okay, we will take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to the items number one and three, as proposed.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so, so moved. All right, so on to our, the, the former item number two on the consent agenda. If we could just amend that, include signage, to make sure appropriate signage is in place, yes.
If I may.
Yes, certainly.
Just the town planner is online.
Oh, good.
The one who's coordinating.
Yes.
She can add some comment to it.
That'd be great.
So that, Maureen, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. The
Hi, Maureen.
Can you, you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, so the trail organizer has been working pretty closely with us for several years when he's done this, the event, and they do have monitors stationed throughout the trail course, and we can certainly ask them to add signage as well. They have monitors and they warn people. They have indicated that they warn people about the trail and the race coming up, et cetera, that we can even ask them to put up some signs before the race day. I'm sure they'd accommodate that.
Okay, that's great, Maureen, that, I'm sure that'd be helpful, and, and yeah, if they put some signs up ahead of time as well, so people are aware, maybe, maybe that's not the day to go hiking in a park perhaps, but, but at least if people are noticed, you know, and, and they know the trails are marked, so just don't want anybody to get hurt. So, okay, so that should, that should cover. Any other questions on this event? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request by the Burl and High School Riding Red Code Cycling Club, the Connecticut Cycling Advancement for a bike race to take place at the Hatchery Brook Conservation Area on June 5th, 2022, with the conditions that the applicants work with the Conservation Commission to assure that the trails are in a condition to accommodate a bike race, and the trails will be fully restored after the race, notice given to the surrounding properties with appropriate signage also of trail usage as described, traffic management and coordinated with the police department and the associated fee waiver for the police services provided for the event.
Thank you, second on that?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Okay, on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone. The, the first item on the agenda is a discussion and a proposal on redistricting town boarding districts. And I have Christian Joan to send this information to you, then also, at the end, hopefully, we can get you to authorize me to schedule and ties for April 5th, 2020 to 7:00 PM, public hearing. With that, I'll turn it over to Joan and Christie.
Okay.
You don't want to know, right? Good evening, everyone. My name is Joan Bailey. I'm a registrar voter here in the town of Burl, and also my counterpart, my contemporary partner in crime, I shouldn't say that, Christie Miano, and we are both registers here in town. As you know, we've gone through the census, and as you know, the legislation up in Hartford has now redistricted all the towns based on population coming in and moving about. So with that, I believe in your packet that was submitted to you, and I will apologize upfront, because this was something that was prepared 14 days ago plus, and the information that we have been receiving into the office has been constant and updating and caused for quite the fury, but we're getting it together, so I think that you have enclosed a map which, which shows the, the legislation split of the town, which basically is a horizontal split, and it divides the town from left to right. The 83rd District is to the south end of the town, and the north end is the 30th District. Also, I believe enclosed is a map for these, all these are two. Also enclosed is a a map for the suggestion we had to go down to four districts at one point. We've received a lot of new information, and we've had to go through the Connecticut voter list and all the districts and all the streets in town, and now Christie and I found that there is a possibility to have the town not districted to two voting locations, but we could actually bring it into a manageable three, and I have that map to you. First, Mike. Just pass those over and counselor and us, we'll be happy to teach you one down. We took into consideration the population of each, each of the districts, also, we took into consideration voting areas that we could utilize, and that right now, if we do go with three, it would be Hubbard, Griswold, and Willard School then become our voting locations. To do it just for two would be an enormous task because of the imbalance in the voting population itself. But we can get down into the weeds. We know that we're just here to ask you to go ahead and give your blessing, and hopefully we'll be able to set this up for a public hearing on the 5th, and we'll have all the information available for the public there, so we can make a decision.
Joan, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Representative H. I'm having a hard time hearing you guys. I don't know what it is, I just put my thing up a little higher. You've scheduled this date for April 5th, if I'm not mistaken?
We're asking the council to schedule a public hearing for the 5th of April.
Okay, so we have a council meeting that evening, so where would this be taking place?
Here.
Here.
Chambers, yeah.
And the chambers at the same time as the council meeting. I just want to make it clear. Okay, all right, I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that would be part of the town meeting itself, would be the public hearing on the zone, on the redistricting.
And the three, so one, two, and three, what, so what are the, so on the, I know, I know you said it just changed, because on our information here, we were down to two with McGee and Willard, what are the, what were the three places we would?
We would still utilize Hubbard.
Okay, Hubbard.
Griswold.
Okay.
And Willard School.
Gotcha, okay, so, so kind of the three parts of town would be Hubbard.
Exactly, and this would help us with, you know, without getting too much into it, but it would help us with maintaining the voting locations as far as staffing goes. We find it very difficult as time moves on, and we have some really blessed seniors that have been volunteering to assist us, and they've been working, some of them 20, 29, 30 years at the polls. Well, those folks now really wish to retire, and it's harder for us to find more spirited, younger folks to fill in the gap. So as we're facing that, we have an opportunity to be aggressive in this and realign the voting districts without upsetting too much of the apple cart. We realize people are resistant to change. But we're
Burl, remember that.
We're trying to do this with a minimal disruption.
What, do they pay the people that work at the polls?
We do give them a stipend.
Maybe we need up the stipend, we'll have people waiting to work there, maybe.
Well, I, I would agree with you, but I would like not to drive up the budget of the town, so my thought process was if we could still have some monies available to boost the current, the workers who would be at those three voting districts, I think we might find people calling us, asking us, hey, do you need some help?
What?
That would be great.
What's the stipend now?
Top of my head, yes.
Well.
Christie, you want to, it depends on the position, so the base pay is like 165, and then you have moderators around the 225, and then there's assistant registers that are in between.
Okay.
Bear in mind that the moderators do have to go through extensive training, because they have to know, I'm sorry, this is Joan Bailey. They have to know all the positions, and they're the ones who oversee or the boss at the polling station, so they are ultimately responsible for all the numbers that's turned into us at the end of the evening.
Well, we can.
Hopefully, we'll get your blessing, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I, yeah, I mean, I yeah, I mean, change is difficult, change with voting locations is difficult. I, I worry that people will be confused, no matter how much information we get out there. I worry about not voting at the senior center, which you know, people in that district are comfortable with, and a lot of seniors are comfortable, yes.
Mayor, if I may just say, this is my third redistricting.
Okay, good, give us your experience then.
When I started here 20 years ago, is when we lost a congressional seat.
Right.
And that was with Nancy Johnson.
All right.
And my phone rang off the hook that year because people wanted to vote for Nancy Johnson.
Which was gone.
Of course, I was new, and they were like, you messed up the ballot, and I'm like, no, no. So it's very difficult for people.
Yes.
And then 10 years ago, we went from seven voting districts down to the five.
Okay, that was 10 years ago, we did that?
So there, it does happen, and it has to do just with the progression of the census and everything along those lines. So this is probably my last time.
Oh, come on. Oh, come on, Kate.
But
Stick around for a couple more, that should be another like, what, 20 years or so? That's not bad.
But it should be, but please know that that's what happens, is that every time we go through the redistricting, there are people who are concerned, and they and they don't really understand it, but it has successfully, we've done it three, this would be hopefully the third time, and during my tenure, and well, we're, as I think that we talked about, on June 9th, we're going to go to the library, and we're going to have to do a little seminar.
Oh, good.
So that people can ask questions, and they can see the boundaries, and they can see the streets, and they have any questions, we're happy to help them with that, and kind of do a little more education. So we're willing to definitely reach out to people as much as we can.
That's good to hear, and, and no, I mean, I know what happens, and we have to march forward with, with time and changes, but I, you know, voting is, you know, pretty sacred, and so it's, it's a little scary that people will be uninformed, just no matter how much we try and get it out there, you know, it's hard to get, as we know about many, many issues, we try and get out to the community, and then I also do worry a little bit about the crowds, I mean, for instance, the senior center is a pretty busy polling spot, but, but is it not? Tell me the number, maybe I'm off on the numbers, you know, I don't know.
Not with the new redistricting.
Okay.
So right now, the senior center, they took out 1,065 people, and they only have
Okay.
A total of 2,654, so they're only proposing like 1,589 people to go to the senior center, which the way the new line is drawn.
Yeah.
Polling place is not in the 83rd District anymore.
Okay, all right, so there'll, there'd be less volume going there.
That's why we're saying there's change that's going to come, and like, that would be a good example.
Okay, and, and the three polling places, I mean Hubbard's small, but Hubbard's not probably going to see a big uptick in people going to Hubbard, would they? I mean, that's a small, that's a pretty small voting.
It depends on the option you vote for, which will reflect in the numbers, because you have to run a scenario for each situation. And so right now, the way they divided the 30th and the 83rd. They have 5,369 in the 83rd, and 11,242 in the 30th.
Okay, so Hubbard would pick up some, or no?
A lot of them were changed. So right now, the way they're proposing Hubbard
Yeah.
is 30th has 2,900 people, and then 535 would go to the 83rd out of Hubbard.
Yeah, okay. And Willard is big enough for, did Willard go up, I would assume, or no?
Okay, so the way they proposed Willard, the way it is today, they have 30 people going to the, I mean, 259 people going to the 30th, and 1,727 going to the 83rd. So our numbers are changed, and they're not the way they were for the November election anymore. These are the new numbers that were just finished being implemented today.
And what does Griswold show?
Okay, so the 30th or Griswold is 4,164, and 238 would go to the 83rd, and we did a polling place across the street, the state, that showed on average, a lot of polling places with over 6,000 at a single polling place location, which were really under the numbers. We definitely have room to make the change.
So, so with these changes, there's no districts, people that are in different parts of that voting, you know, district for Burl, and are they going to get different, they're not getting different ballots, they are.
Today, the way they divided it and the way the line is drawn impacted all districts, one through five, and it split them all to the 83rd and 30th. Today, the, the way we're used to running it is the 83rd being going to the one and four district, which is the Willard School and Senior Center, and then two, three, and five being the 30th District.
Okay.
We keep it separated, and we would like to continue to do that.
Yeah.
And that's why Willard School could definitely accommodate the 5,369 people over a 15 hour day.
Okay, plus, you'll be able to, with three voting this, polls, you'll be able to disperse the people you had at four or five into three to help with the influx.
The senior center is not now, like, they're not in the 83rd District anymore, but that's another reason.
So even, even if we wanted to keep something at the senior center, we wouldn't be able to, because we would have to look for a different location.
Gotcha, okay.
There's no other facility, except if we wrap around and come back to Willard.
Okay.
So in a, in a way, if you can imagine, we're sort of combining the current one and four. If you think of it that way, really, District Three always was Hubbard, so those people have minimal adjustment. You're only going to find the people who are on the fringes of each of those borders are going to be the ones impacted. But the majority of people, except for District Four, are going to be voting where they were voting before.
All right, I mean, again, as long as we
We're trying to keep the drama down, Mr.
That would, that's really what I'm worried about. About the drama, and worried about confusion on, on voting day, you know, I mean, people drive around and don't know where to vote, I mean, I, we know that will happen with one person or more many, but just, you know, that, that's great, if we, you know, got to keep, you know, you're going to do the little seminar there, and we get, just make sure we keep getting the information out there, you know, through many.
I believe they also sent out, you sent out notices to everybody.
That was for a polling place change, so this one impacted the whole entire town, we'd probably be putting it in the paper and on the website.
Okay.
Because then we could also post the street list, so they can look up their street, their address, and it'll show them where to go.
Is the thought to implement the selection 2022 or 2023 for the municipal?
Be done for this primary and August.
Upcoming primary, okay.
Were there any other places besides the schools that were considered as far as polling place is concerned?
We already use the VFW, and that's actually considered on a smaller size. We really need the large cafeterias and gym in the way it is today.
Right. Anyone else? Questions, thoughts?
From my experiences being out in front of a poll place when I was on the council early, was that it took a couple of years before people understood where to vote, because one year, it was a huge presidential election or gubernatorial election, and half the people I saw for the couple hours, I stood out in front of Willard, were so mad, they were just going to go home. They had no idea that they had to drive from Willard to go to the Legion, and I was one of those people, because I used to be able to walk to Willard to vote, and had to change to go to the Legion. Well, next year was more or less Well, next year was more or less like this year, it was a, you know, municipal election and there were still people coming in mad, even. A lot of people, like, what, you didn't vote in a big election, you came out for this one. I thought that was shocking, but it, it seemed like it took a couple of years.
I, I think the candidates will make it very clear to the voters where to vote. And I think the experience we had with the COVID, with people voting by absentee, I, I think that'll help also.
I think that you need to understand too, because it hit all five districts. That if we actually kept the five districts and, and if I'm correct, then in each district, there'll be two different ballots.
Yeah.
The likelihood that someone's gonna get the wrong ballot.
Yeah.
It's not, that's been done, I'm sure you've heard the horror stories in other towns. And that's something that registers really wanted to avoid.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, you can do color codes and you can do everything else and there's still that. Oopsie. So, um, we're trying hard to make it as simple for everybody. But especially with the voters, we want to make sure they get the right ballot and that they're, you know.
We're gonna do everything we can, um, to, to get ahead of this. We just have to finish with our, our. We just have to get through the public hearing and get this all settled in and then we'll be able to set up, um, advertising. We'll do probably some sort of op-ed piece with the citizens. But we're gonna, we're gonna put the word out there and then we're gonna have the June public hearing in the library or informational hearing, should I say? And, um, I think that that will be a good thing.
Yeah, and, and maybe we could, uh, on election day or whenever we're using the polling places, we put some signs right at the ones that are not open anymore? Like, in other words, if somebody were to drive to the senior center looking to vote, there'd be a sign saying, you now vote at.
Willard.
We did that when we did.
Did you do that?
Voting, yeah.
Yeah.
Polling place change.
Right, I mean, just so, you know, I, I mean, we all know there will be many people, I don't care how much information we put out there, that will not get it to voting day. And then we'll drive to Willard, I mean, drive to the senior center or VFW and looking, wondering what has happened.
We really can't put that signage out where to direct them because it really depends on their address. Where it's not a polling place change where everybody in that district is all switched, this impacted every single district.
I see, I know.
And those were the numbers I was giving you before, so like five hundred people are gonna.
I see mass confusion, I'm sorry, I just know what, we, we know what will happen, I, I, we know this is gonna happen.
There's, there's nothing.
We can do about it, though, right? Yeah, yeah, no, I know, well, I hope there's nothing we can do about it, we say that now until we, you know.
You just understand, all five voting districts.
All right, okay, no, I understand, I understand what we're saying, but I know, we all know what will happen, let's face it. Because if you can't put even a sign up directing them to another one.
We could put up a sign saying.
Maybe depending upon.
This polling place has changed.
Yeah.
While, you know, the registers or town or whoever. There's, you can think outside the box and at least try to adjust most.
We need, we need to.
May I ask a question? Is it possible, for example, like the senior center, we can use one of our staff to have the list.
Okay.
Where they're going.
A live, a live person?
I show up there, I give my name, it's only you're going to this.
Oh, I like that.
There's no confusion.
Oh, that's good.
Send them directly.
That's good.
Do that.
That's good.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
You must have to do, you want an answer where to go.
Even the VFW, we can have someone in there. I mean.
I like that.
Let's do it.
Yeah, we have to do that.
They, they can't call and.
No, no.
Be driving around.
Not, not on election day. Yeah.
I understand why and what, but what's the council's part in this?
You have to, oh.
Okay.
Basically, uh, this has to be approved, it has to be sent to a public hearing by the council or an ordinance because we need your blessing in order to do this.
And what happens if we don't bless that?
Well, I would refer to Representative Beach.
Don't refer to me because I think it's gonna be a real zoo.
I'm saying, we have to endorse this ordinance whether we like it or not, so why are we even looking at it?
Well.
We're just doing a public hearing.
Is as far as the number of polling places. So at one point, we were hoping to maybe even go down to two, but realized once they got the numbers in and how it was situated, that that would not be a, a good fit for Burling. So. You're, you could stay with the five, but we're warning you.
It'd be a mess.
There's a possibility that wrong ballots will be issued. So that's, or you could say, you know what, we're gonna go down to two, we, we understand what you're saying and what we think we can do too. Um, the registers based upon their numbers are very comfortable with three.
So it's a lesser of two evils, either we keep all five and risk a wrong ballot being handed out or we go to three and people don't even go at all. Or they can't find where they gotta go and they go home, I don't, I don't know, I, I mean, I, you know, I.
Two districts at the one polling place would be an absolute nightmare.
Yeah, no, two, we couldn't go to two, but.
No, I'm saying.
Oh, oh, yeah, with handing out the, yeah, I know, I know.
I'm just to dovetail on what, what, um, um, they were saying, excuse me, I'm so sorry. This was the call last night. What, just to dovetail on that thought, if we were to stay with the five districts, the line is gonna be drawn the way it's drawn. When you look at that two map, it's gonna cut right across, which means that we technically don't have five districts anymore, we could be going to ten. And I don't know if I can get people to work. Those ten, so I really urge, I really urge you, and I know it's gonna be tough, listen, we're the registrars, we know we're gonna get slammed with it. And we will take on whatever we can, we're gonna do the best we can to keep this console, you know, safe and, uh, and just. It, it's, it's something that's forced on us.
No, I get it.
Really have a choice.
I, I see.
Trying to make the best.
I don't like not having choices, it's not nice.
Well, that's why you either have two or three.
State legislature.
Have the two map.
I don't like the state legislature pushing that down on us, you know, but whatever, they, they've done what they've done, I get it, I get it. I know you don't. No, I understand.
Just trying to, uh.
Do the best we can.
And just take a positive spin on this and, um, and we're gonna do the best we can to educate people and.
Yes.
All I can promise that we can.
That's all we can do, I, I know, I know that. I, I, I know that, but I just know what will happen, but that's all right, it is what it is, I, I don't believe we have, we probably do not have a choice, I, I understand that.
I mean, one, and it's, it's hit every town, every city.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and every city, every town, every city. So, you know, it's hit my whole town, it's hit here.
Yeah.
You know, people are going to be upset, I understand that.
You bet they will be.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that people, again, they, especially voters who have voted for years, you all, ten years ago, you had a, a change. And ten years before that was a change, especially when we lost a congressional seat, and that hurt the state. So that's where these things happen and unfortunately, it is the way of the, the law, it's based upon population.
I think.
And then it's based upon, you know, making sure that hopefully everybody has a say. You know, and there's some towns that are still, they're, they're split so badly that I don't even know how they know who they're voting for.
That's comforting.
Yeah.
That's very comforting.
Scary, Kate, that's pretty scary.
Yeah, yeah.
State senator.
Right, right, so it's a little bit easier to figure out, yeah, yeah.
You got like the city of Waterbury, they must have like four or five reps.
Hmm.
While you're figuring it out.
No, I, I, listen, it is what it is, it's, I, I think the best thought was a roach with, uh, a person at each closed pop. But with, that would be able to direct people off, off the list and tell them where to go.
Maureen just said, you know, we could prepare maps and all that.
Yes.
Direction, I mean, people would know, but if they don't, we can have.
Yeah, yeah.
All of this route you'll end up in, well, for example.
Yeah, follow.
Show a map.
Yeah.
We can try to help people as much.
Yes, I, I, I think we need to, and I know we will, I know we will, we all will, I, I get it, it's just, it is, you know. Little scary, but that's all right. As you know, as you know. Our two registrars know more than anyone, yes, but, all right, all right, now.
We are an uncharted tour, uh, waters.
Yeah.
Chris, crash course.
Yeah, it happens, we know it does happen, so, okay. What's that?
I won't be here in ten years to do this.
So, okay, if you guys all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it, thank, thank you. We'll see on the fifth, yeah, maybe, no, we'll see on the fifth, that's all right, we'll see on the. Thanks, thank you, appreciate it, no, it's not an easy task. All right, so for, through with our discussion, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to authorize the town manager to schedule and advertise for April fifth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. Hold a public hearing and to consider an act upon ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Voting Districts of the Town of Burling.
Second on that?
Second.
All right, any other comments or discussion? Any none, all is in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so, so moved.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And item number two is a eight twenty-four referral planning and zoning, a request for conveniences of land. Looking for Ragged Mountains Preserve Trailhead on West Lane. Maureen's here, actually, she's on Zoom, who are the agenda item, what do you, Maureen?
Thank you, so the Planning and Zoning Commission has an application before them for a planned residential development at the south end of Shuttle Metal Country Club. Property, um, access will be off of West Lane. The portion of the property of Shuttle Metal to be developed is just east of the bend of West Lane onto Wigwam Road. And just east of the entrance to the existing well-used Ragged Mountain Preserve Trails. Um, it was recognized, um, throughout the process that the parking along West Lane for trail use has been an issue. For the area where dozens of hikers' cars are frequently parked and pulled off along the travelway. The applicant has included in their proposal to Planning and Zoning Commission to dedicate a one point zero one acre parcel. To the town so that parking, a parking area can be developed to alleviate some of the parking demand. They included a layout plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission showing parking and drives to accommodate approximately forty-five cars, including a couple of handicap spaces. The layout shows a separate parking entrance to this parking area west of the drive into the development. And in speaking with Attorney Sullivan, it is my understanding that the proposal includes the dedication of the land for the future parking improvements to be done by the town when the town sees fit. The concept for land for the parking area has been encouraged by staff and was discussed and endorsed by the Conservation Commission for this area. The applicant has requested that town council forward the eight twenty-four review to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the, their proposed dedication can be considered simultaneously with their development proposal, which is before the Planning and Zoning Commission currently.
Okay, thank you, Maureen. Okay, questions on this? Hearing none, go ahead.
One quick question about the parking, Maureen, that parking just will be dedicated for hikers or is there gonna be some kind of signature? Could that also be used for the people that, that could be living at that proposed development site?
So it'll be signed as Trailhead Parking, presumably, you know, it's not developed yet. Um, but the entryway is quite a ways west of the driveway into the development. So on the plan, it just doesn't seem as though that would be a likely occurrence where overflow parking may be more likely to park along the road, internal roadways of the development. In my opinion.
I, I'd like to just make a comment, it's actually probably nice that we're putting that there because that road is pretty treacherous when they have cars on both sides. For the hikers, you know, it's, it's really, it could be a real mess over there.
Maureen, just, I, I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I've come, I've counted upwards of fifty cars along West Lane at the certain times during COVID.
And it is tough for people in the neighborhood too, it's a pretty well-concentrated neighborhood in that area. Uh, Maureen, I was just gonna ask, I think I, I didn't quite hear how many cars the lot would accommodate.
Um, their sketch plan shows forty-five.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else? No, I think that's great, that, 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 that's been a habitual problem there, so that's wonderful to have a parking lot now that'll accommodate that many vehicles, so. Okay, there's no other questions, go ahead and take a motion.
Sure, I move to refer the matter of, uh, convenience to the town of one point zero one acres of M B L one four ten one north of West Lane for the purposes of conservation area parking. To the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation per section eight twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second on that?
My second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Maureen. And item number three is a police vehicle emergency equipment transfer, just, uh, an installation. I see the chief there, but I believe Chris Seuss is gonna take this if he's there. What do you, Chris?
I'm here, I'm, I'm here, good evening, everybody. So, uh, the four vehicles, how are you? The four vehicles we ordered are in, so we've been working with M H Q for many years now, they came down, they, they saw the vehicles we were replacing, they looked at our equipment, what they can transfer, what they could use. Gave us four quotes, um, they're on state contract pricing, so we're just basically looking here for, uh, the waiver of the bidding requirement and approval of, uh, uh, purchase to outfit four of our vehicles.
Okay, um, thanks, chief. Expensive, I assume these prices keep going up like everything else, right?
A little bit, yeah, I mean, and not, not crazy, but, um, they're not, they're not out of line from maybe, uh, last year, you know, a little bit.
All right, it is four vehicles, so, understood. Okay, any, any questions? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve awarding the contract to M H Q Inc. for the transfer, purchase, and installation of equipment for four police vehicles under state contract. Number one-two P S X zero-one-nine-four for an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-seven cents.
All right, second on that?
Second.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries.
Thank you. Then item number four is a justice assistance formula grant, um, to accept the grant and at the same time, um, use the funds, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Okay, so we applied for, uh, a justice assistance grant, it was a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Um, half of the funds are, uh, awarded upon approval and then the remaining half is, uh, awarded at closeout, so it's fully reimb- reimbursable. Um, the five mid-state chiefs, um, met and discussed using, uh, for our mid-state reconstructive crash team. Um, they use, uh, technology now, it's kind of cumbersome, time-consuming, the technology really hasn't kept up, so they wanna replace the system they're using now with this Pharaoh technology. And each member of town is, uh, gonna contribute, um, twelve thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars to that. And then the second piece was to replace our current, um, L P R system, which is mounted on one of our vehicles, it's almost ten years old. Uh, we got that system from a justice assistance grant back in twenty thirteen. And so those are the two items, uh, we've, we've earmarked for these funds. And also, uh, during the budget process, we, we weren't aware that this grant was gonna be out there, so. In our current budget, we have, we had sixteen thousand and thirteen thousand, um, so twenty-nine thousand total in our current budget that if this is approved, we'll be able to remove from the budget.
Good deal.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Okay, chief, tha- thank you, yeah, I know, we always have to. Keep up with technology, obviously, ten years old is probably, you know, ancient, it's right, right by technology standards.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Chief, how, how and where will these, um, plate readers be? Are they on the cruisers or are they stationary?
Yeah, so, uh, we currently have one mounted on a cruiser. And, um, again, it's been in place since twenty thirteen, we have a policy on its use and records retention, we share a server with Rocky Hill and Cromwell. Rocky Hill actually, uh, hosts the server, um, and maintains that end of it, so we. So we, we join on, but it's a, it's a good investigative tool for us on, uh, for leads and suspects. We not only have access to our plate reads, but we have access to Rocky Hill and Cromwell's as well. So this would, this would be just to replace our current unit, which, you know, uh, it's not a warranty for, for hardware, we only have software warranties now and it's been breaking down, we've had to replace it, it's not functioning, so it's, it's due.
Yeah, they're, um, it's a great tool for law enforcement, certainly, you know.
You do.
Sometimes help track, what do you think?
They won't be used to search for people who haven't paid their taxes, will they?
You worried, Peter? Just kidding, just kidding, well, you know, I.
The town of Ber- the town, town of Berlin doesn't use, it has those capabilities, we don't use it, it's not set up for that, it could be if the town wants to explore that option.
Well, I'm just a little concerned about privacy, but.
Well, Peter, I, I agree a little bit of that, and I did ask, uh, town manager and Chris some, some questions because I was worried about, you know, how these things are used, what kind of policies we have in place and the retention. And I know there's state statutes and Chris did email me some of those, but, you know, there's about sixteen states that have changed some of their policies where, you know, I think Chris told me that they may keep some of the stuff for five years and if you're just grabbing people's license plates and it's not part of a crime, you should get rid of it right away, that's my feeling. Some of these states are now thirty days, ninety days, hundred fifty days. If it's not, you know, part of a criminal investigation, or they can retain it for a certain number of years. You know, I had the same concern and I think, you know, some of his response, you know, eased my concerns, but, and I, I did ask Steve Wilson to review their policies, you know, make sure that we could do that so that, you know, people get nervous about this, I mean, there was a case a few years ago where a gentleman sued to get the images. And what he found out is that, you know, they, they have all these images of his vehicle and it's got pictures of him and his wife and his kids getting out of his car in his driveway. Now, if they're smart people out there, they can use this if they get in and break into the server. So he was a little concerned and then Virg- that was in Virginia, Virginia changed their retention laws to thirty days after that. One of the other things I thought was interesting is some of these sixteen states also required that no outside agency would have access, it would stay within the law enforcement agencies, that you're not gonna sub the retention and the data, the data server to a third agency outside, please, so. I did ask Steve Wilson to look into that, just to ease some, some of my concerns. But I do understand the law enforcement aspect of it, that it could.
Yeah, no, no question, but it also in my other life at, at the motor vehicle department, I know the hits there. I mean, I, I got two or three tickets on bridges I never went through, I mean, there's so many different classic plates out there, combination, commercial, farm, uh, it, it's almost endless, I think there's a it was a hundred classes when I left, so, you know, we better make sure that, that the software is okay.
Yeah, I could explain a little further on that, so what, what the license plate reader is actually cap- capturing is just a photo of the license plate and it's comparing it to a database that gets, it gets downloaded on a daily basis from the collect system, D M V system, but it's only returning wanted persons, um, unregistered vehicles, as we call them, hits, like, so, so, uh, you know, our officers routinely, routinely drive through the motels to check the parking lots, it's scanning the plates and if it sees stolen cars, unregistered cars, wanted persons, we get a hit and then we actually have to type in the plate to get the information back and confirm it. So it's not, it's not telling, as an officer is driving by or someone's driving by an officer in the car, it's not saying, oh, that's, you know, Councillor Luddy, or, you know. It, it, if there was a hit on the car, that would come back and then the officer would independently verify it.
Thank you.
It has my name on it.
You got it.
I appreciate it, Chief, yeah, I mean, they're, they're a very valuable tool, we use them endlessly in the federal government for a lot of things. You know, crossing borders and tracking cars through states for criminal activity, but again, therefore, basically criminal activity is what we're looking for and we can help our law enforcement solve crimes and stop crimes from happening, that's, that's what, what technology is here for today, so, but, but certainly, you know, concerns about privacy are important and I, I'm sure the, you know, the server is protected and it's, it's obviously for a law enforcement purpose only, so. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, uh, we'll go ahead and take a couple motions.
Okay, first one, I move to accept the twenty-five thousand dollar justice assistant grant to the JAG revenue account and appropriate the funds miscellaneous equipment account.
Second on that?
That's the start of a big birth.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? All is in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
And the second one, move to waive the bidding requirements for the twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents purchase the mapping system with Pharaoh Technologies and the twelve thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars purchases, purchase of a license plate reader with Sellex E S Inc., as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, so moved. Uh, I, I might add that, that there's probably, we're worried about the license plate readers, this is probably the thing that we can track everybody more with than anything out there, so if you wanna not be tracked, get rid of this, just so you know. Anyway, all right, so, uh, on to number five.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. The line, uh, then item number five, um, you know, the Advisory Committee on Affordable Housing have been working for the last few months under the leadership of Mr. Miller like here, and then staffed by Mahoney, Maureen Juisty, and also Jennifer Capola, they've been doing tremendous work under this and, um, before you get the final report, it'll be good for you to get a status update on where they are. It's shaping up really nicely, you have a thick packet, you know, I'm going over the whole package, Jim is gonna give you a recap, but I think there's a lot of good information in their survey results and all that, you might wanna take a look when you get a chance before we bring the final report to you soon.
Soon.
So with that, I will turn it over to Jim.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, first of all, I guess I'd echo, um, Arusha's comments and George Millard has been a, uh, you know, strong leader of the committee, I see Amy Balco, uh, on the call today and she's been a faithful attender and, uh, you know, with, with Jennifer, Jennifer Capola really working for many towns on this project, I think we have a good team. As Aru said, we've, we've got to the point where we have a draft plan and working through it. Just looking ahead, the, um, we're planning on, on getting you a cleaned-up draft plan before, for your April fifth meeting and to make a presentation at that point in more detail. And, um, you've seen, you know, you, you have some draft material and I, I recommend that as you review the material you have now, if you have any comments, particularly, I think, on the goals and strategies and actions, you know, what the priorities are, let us know about those things as soon as you, you know, as soon as you identify them, so we can work ahead, so, and make any changes we need to make as soon in the, in the process as possible. Then, um, we would, you have to schedule a public hearing, uh, or, you know, you don't have to schedule a public hearing, but if you do schedule a public hearing, which we recommend, then you need to publish the plan thirty-five days before the public hearing. So what we would like to do is have the public hearing at your May seventeenth meeting and, you know, if we don't have any substantial substantive public comments that you think you should, you need to address, then the plan could possibly be adopted at that meeting or then a special meeting would have to be called because the plan has to be submitted to the state by June first. So that's, that's kind of the, the background and I know you've heard, heard a lot of this before, but just to give you a quick rep- update, the committee's been working hard, we did the survey, uh, met with developers, bankers, realtors, mortgage brokers, town departments and the health district and gathered a lot of good information. We had a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was productive and the, um, we plan on having another meeting with them next Monday night, the twenty-first. And the purpose, you know, the plan of conserva- that we have a Plan of Conservation and Development Subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning Commission and, uh, obviously, what, what we'd like to have happen is that, uh, you know, the Affordable Housing Plan and the Plan of Conservation and Development are, you know, compatible in concert with each other. So we're striving to achieve that through the joint meetings early on in the process. Just a summary of, you know, some of the thing, you know, just in a very general sense of the, some of the things we have identified so far, obvious, I, I think clearly as in Berlin, as in, you know, in the state of Connecticut, in all our neighboring towns, there's a need for more affordable housing. That's particular, what we've identified through the survey and, you know, and the analysis is that, uh, two particular need areas are, are affordable housing for seniors and affordable housing for, you know, low, affordable, we define, you know, in general state statute eighty percent of median income and less, but particularly for, for, for households with fifty percent of median income or less, that's, that's a, a bigger need and acute need. However, in that category, typically, these projects do require significant state and federal subsidies, tax credits and, and the like, so it's not something that the town can do on its own, but that is a particular, uh, particular need. The, the town, as we've discussed before, has made substantial progress in affordable housing. We went from two percent twenty years ago to over nine percent affordable housing with a ten percent target. So we've made substantial progress. Right now, we're of the towns that, of the hundred thirty-eight towns that have not met the ten percent threshold, we're fourth fat, fourth closest to achieving it. We stepped, took that a couple of notches this year and one of the things that, uh, we've had these categories, de-restricted units, government-assisted units, C H F A financed units, and the C H F A financed units is obviously something we really don't have under our control. And, uh, in this period, in the, in the last year, we had a reduction in the C H F A financed units in Berlin of eighteen households. So, you know, that's something to keep in mind as we work toward our targets that, you know, we, we don't have control over that, so we have to really have a goal of certainly exceeding, you know, the ten percent and hopefully maintaining that once we, once we reach it. One of the things we learned is that the, um, most of the, of the median, of the median sales price of both condominiums and, and single-family homes in Berlin are below the C H F A maximum house prices, so they, you know, so Berlin has a lot of affordable, by that definition, uh, homie, housing units for homeownership. However, you know, as you see with the reduction in the C H F A mortgages, what, what we heard from, from the experts that we talked to is that, that people with these, with incomes at that level, we're having a different, difficult time competing in the housing market that we're in today, where many, many offers are cash offers, no contingency offers, um, things of that nature. So it was difficult for some of the lower, um, lower-income households to compete, even if they could theoretically afford the unit. So again, that's something that is not under control, under control, but fortunately, we do have lots of, lots of homes that are priced within an affordable range. Right now, with the, um, with the new housing appeals list that came out for, in just a couple of weeks ago, as I said, we, we lost eighteen units of C H F A, so we're now, we're now about eighty units short of, of the goal of ten percent and that, we expect it to go up to about a hundred twenty, a hundred twenty-five units once we have the new nine, uh, twenty-twenty census numbers. So we have work to do, um, the good news is that we have a hundred and seventy-eight units that will qualify that have already been approved and, um, but not yet built and the first of those to be built will probably be Demming Ridge, the Metro's, Metro's project on Demming Road, that's eighty-eight units and they've already started their site work over there, they've got their financing in place and they've applied for the building permit, so that, that project is moving along and, uh, as I said, we've got a number of other projects that have already been approved. In addition, we've got, uh, applications for three other projects that would create an additional forty-two units if they were approved. So, uh, we made, I think, good progress. Some of the key survey responses, and again, lots of things we found out from the survey, but a thing that the the survey respondents, which, you know, were primarily, primarily, uh, vast majority of them were Berlin residents, they, they supported that there was a need for more senior housing and they also supported the idea of more affordable home ownership, um, opportunities. So those are two things that we'll, we'll try to address in the, in the plan. One of the things we tried to think about was how Berlin has, has, um, located, uh, affordable housing in the past, some of the characteristics of the sites that we identified that we would expect primarily to, to be, um, continue on into the future, that, you know, properties that have good, uh, public sewer and water, we wanna minimize, uh, impact to neighborhoods, uh, good transportation, good proximity to goods and services. And so we have the, the concentrations of affordable housing now on Demming Road in vicinity, on the Berlin Turnpike. The Housing Authority projects are in the single-family residential zones and are, you know, both Marjorie Moore and Percival Heights are connected to other town facilities. And then, you know, now with the T O D Kensington Village area, we've got, um, a few affordable units there and obviously more multifamily units that are being developed in that area, so those, those are areas that are already concentrations of, of affordable housing. The housing plan just generally is gonna, you know, it, it has, it will have a value statement, uh, goals, strategies, actions and, um, these, as I said earlier, the, these elements are still under, under discussion and, you know, we'd like your input, but if you have, you know, a fine tuning, um, certainly we'll, we'll take that anytime, if you, if you start to read the plan and you think that we really, really needed a major correction, please reach out and tell us as soon as possible. And, um, so that's, that's a general overview and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Jim, I appreciate all the hard work of, uh, yourself and Jennifer and certainly the Advisory Committee. Appreciate George here and, and the folks, uh, on Zoom and whoever isn't here on the committee, appreciate all the hard work, it's difficult, it can be tedious at times, but it's important and, uh, you know, Berlin's always put affordable housing, uh, on the front burner, really. We, we're one of the few towns that have almost at the the ten percent, uh, suggestion from the state and we're still moving forward, which, which is great, you know, even though the number's going up, we, our units are going up that, that are proposed and that are, uh, you know, uh, planned, so that, that's, that's good to hear and hopefully this plan will, uh, you know, clear it up a little bit, uh, and, uh, understand what we need to do going forward, so. Thank you guys for the hard work, I know it's not quite done yet, but we appreciate it. Questions, anybody?
No.
We got a lot of info to look at, we appreciate what you've done so far and we'll, we'll take a look at this. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim, um, all, all of you.
All of you, all of you.
Jim's really very modest, humble guy, but this is his third time around doing the C D.
God bless you.
All in the two thousand three, two thousand thirteen, now the two thousand twenty-three and he's a tremendous value to all of us and been very helpful, so thanks for all your help.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Then item number six, uh, back to elections again, allowing taxpayers to vote in the referendum and this is by a town clerk.
Oh, the town clerk. Yes, we do.
We do it every year, simply to allow the taxpayers to vote in the budget referendum.
We do it every year simply to allow the taxpayers to vote in the budget referendum.
Okay, I think there should be a lot of vote, budget refer, I think that's important. Thank you, Kate. Any, any questions on this, comments? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Hey, I move to allow any person who is a citizen of the United States. The age of eighteen years or more jointly or severally liable to the town for taxes assessed against him or her. An assessment of not less than one thousand dollars. On the last completed grand list, town, who vote in the budget referendum on April twenty sixth, May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two.
Excuse me, thank you, second on that. Uh, any other comments or questions? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, all right, motion carries, thanks. Okay, where are we at? Appointments, we have, I guess, one, Kate?
Yes, that would be for Mr. O'Brien on the housing authority.
I, that is, uh. Okay, okay, yeah, he's already on there, right, so.
Reappointed.
Reappointed, okay, we'll go ahead and uh. Uh, open the nominations, take a nomination.
And Mr. O'Brien, back on to the housing authority.
All right, thank you, any other nominations for that spot? There are none, go ahead and close the nominations and uh all those in favor of our nominee, aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, thank you, uh, welcome back, uh, John to the uh housing authority. Okay, town managers report. Yes, we're here.
So the uh first couple of items, I, I just want to give you a heads up in case somebody reaches out to you. Um, so the first one is, uh, I've been approached by the Berlin Historical Society. Uh, making arrangements to celebrate their three hundred years this year.
Oh.
Know that they've been uh there since seventeen twenty two.
Wow, really?
In the two thousand twenty two, so.
Ah.
Um, what they would like to do is to um. You seen those banners that you get on college campuses that you put on lamp post, like, also on double sided.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So they want to design, um, probably get uh some of the high school students involved in the project.
Uh, nice.
Design some nice banners that could uh showcase Kensington, a bit of history, uh maybe the Yankee Peddler. Um, you know, the, they've talked about the farmer's market, upbeat picnic. It's some few ideas and um. They're asking if we can help them out.
Yeah.
So. But they don't have money.
They say, help them out financially?
So, it's not very costly, uh, those banners are about sixty bucks, so um. They're looking at ten to fifteen banners on Main and Farmington Avenue. Um, and I've reached out to uh Public Grounds, they're willing to, you know, use the. The staff there to help them, you know, clip them and some of them already have the banner clips and all that, that you can just. I doubt, used it in the past, so um. I will bring a formal agenda item at some point, um, there are two things. Uh, we'll be asking, one is to, uh, we'll find the money in the town budget, so many hundred bucks, we can do that. The second one is, I think, Jeff can correct me on this, since we have a flag policy now, I, I think. I will need formal approval from you.
Uh, yes.
Or something, or something different from what is allowed in the flag policy. temporary.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Think we're gonna, we could work on that, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I don't see this as a big problem, it's a nice occasion to celebrate Kensington. And showcase it, so uh perhaps I can get one of them to come and speak.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Uh, can have an opportunity to ask questions and.
Danger focus on?
Uh, probably by the time it gets warmer, close to the summer, um. So it'll take some time to order, hopefully there are no supply chain problems with this product, too.
Yeah.
We can get it this year.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
That's good to celebrate our history, right?
Yeah.
Learn about our history.
Yep.
When you go to their museum, it's unbelievable, the history that.
Very cool.
You don't know, right?
Yep.
Till you see some of the things that have come uh from Berlin.
Yeah.
Products and different things, so that's great.
So maybe you'll have some ideas on what we can also put on a banner to celebrate.
Yeah.
That people might not know. Um, the second one, uh, we've been approached by um. Former resident of Berlin, parents passed away. And the three children live outside of Berlin, they have a small piece of land. Uh, at the intersection of Ledge Road and Savage Hill Road. Uh, it, it just, it's a very small piece, you know, just before that nasty slope. Um, on uh Ledge Road and uh. They have no interest in the piece of land, they wanted donated to the town. Um, and they pay about sixty bucks in taxes every year. So I consulted with Public Works, um, they have indicated there that they would like to have that piece of land. You know, for, you know, sideline improvements or any roadwork improvement, it would be nice to have something for the town. But what I asked the donors to do is so that they need to do a environmental, well, one report. So that we know it's clear. I'm not sure whether they'll be willing to do it, it's about thirty five hundred to four thousand dollars at least. So they might decide not to do it. And I also advise them to uh reach out to the neighbors and see if they want to take it, because I would rather not.
Roche, how much acreage are we talking about?
Oh. It, it just, it's very small, not, not even, not even close to a quarter acre, it's a patch of land. So um, well, I'll bring a formal proposal for your consideration, but I, I told the. The person who wants to give the land, do not go and spend money. Until uh we sort of uh discuss this amongst ourselves and see if he want to accept it. But they might also reach out to you in case they probably didn't like my answer about the environment report.
Oh, can I ask a question, is there anything on that property that would indicate that there would be a problem in terms of environmental, you know, uh. Waste or anything like that, or is it just a plain piece of property that has not been utilized?
We will not know, we aren't, we have no way of knowing and I, I would not advise you to take a piece of land without.
No, I'm just curious, I mean, it's not like it's a gas station that's sitting on top of this property, that's, I'm just curious.
At that, you know, one hundred years ago, I don't know what was in there. I, it's just, uh, it's a risk of taking.
We've already done that once and we're, I don't know how many million into the cleanup, so. I mean, not, not, you know, it wasn't a doubt, you know, to your point, Donna, it wasn't, you know, in that industrial part of town, but.
Right, right.
We're, you know, you know, we, we're still going through that for one piece, but.
So they're gonna check with the neighbors?
Oh, that's good.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, the third one, um, I mentioned last meeting about the uh Barbara Voice, who's the uh. VNA administrator slash clinical supervisor, she's. Um, unfortunately moving to Florida. And which leaves a vacancy and um. It, it's hard to fill these positions, um, I've posted the position. Trying to get someone who is qualified and also someone who would want to do this. None of the internal nurses want this job. Um, partly because, you know, it's just a lot of uncertainty. Then also you will be required to take some additional credits to learn. Uh, to be a clinical supervisor, there's some educational requirements that you have to fulfill. So, um, the tricky part is within forty eight hours of the last day, which is April first. I need to inform the Department of Public Health for departure and the plan to refill the position. Um, they will accept uh in the rim plan. Someone who's not qualified, like a nurse, might be able to do it for a while. Um, but then again, it, it needs to be. Uh, they will evaluate in the context of the longer term plan. So if we continue without having someone with the qualifications. Um, they can, you know, fine us, put us on probation or even close. Uh, this is from the Department of Public Health, right, so um. Yeah, I'm gonna, my job is to try and. Enforce the charter as much as possible, right, so we're gonna try and. Um, fill this position and get someone in there, but I just want you to know, uh, as a heads up, at uh. This is a tricky environment, uh, in a, I'm, I'm really saddened by her departure because she was really good.
She seemed really good, yeah.
And really uh got into the, um, you know. Understanding the billing and the reimbursements and. Put a plan in place for us to uh prove the bottom line. And uh, but a lot of the nurses don't want administrative work, they just don't want to, you know, the people. What, that's what they, in this business.
Hmm, yeah, that's a tough situation, shame she's gone.
Um, just to keep you informed of the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget. Um, Board of Finance missed last Wednesday, there was a workshop and uh. I was given a charge, I mean, an eye to uh come up with the. Certain target in terms of um closing the gap, we were at one point nine eight mill rate, rate increase. And Chair had asked us to come up with a plan, the combination of some of the ideas they have. The Board of Fed to bring it to a uh half a mil. And I, I put something together and we'll present it tomorrow, the Board of Finance.
They got another work session, right?
Or is a workshop again? And um, we'll take it from there.
Okay, great.
And um, remember the uh, the Berlin Police ED? Mention plan, the DB.
Yes, yes.
We got some numbers from the actuaries.
Okay.
Four different scenarios with and without the cost of living adjustments. And um, but I would suggest is the next step to get the end health committee together.
Okay.
Um, try to schedule something within a next week or so.
Hmm.
And uh, all of you to review it and see where you want to go with it. Because I didn't think it's before we go and engage attorneys and actuaries and put the plan together, it's going to be costly. Uh, we probably want to bring it to other groups, maybe the Council Board of Finance, see if we want to go with it.
Yeah.
All right.
Hmm.
And then um, remember that um, software that we talked about?
Yes.
Gov.
Yes.
So uh, the product is great, but uh Jeff and I have had a difficult time um agreeing with them on the. On the contract terms and conditions.
Oh.
They've been very um rigid about not accommodating our request.
Oh.
I'm putting it very lightly.
Really?
Very difficult to work with them.
Hmm.
And uh, you know, Jeff is a very accommodating.
Yeah.
Gentleman, but uh they've been.
Really?
Nasty, so to say.
Why would that be?
Just uh. Um, so.
Do they not want to sell their product?
They do, but they just um. Well, I'll, I'll just be silent on this. But there are other products that I'm evaluating, right?
Okay.
So it'll take a little bit more time, but uh I would prefer not to do business with people who don't really uh. Respect other opinions or want to work with people, I don't like to take it only with attitude.
Yeah, that would be, uh, probably not good if we did go to. Uh, agreement with them, if that's not good, yeah.
Um.
It's too bad.
And then finally, I, at some point, um, looking at Peter, the mayor. The, and I think Charlie's working one, too.
We got the old people on the council here?
I don't know.
All right, I just, I just wondered, I'm sorry.
People.
Okay, good, we'll take that one.
Mics, you know, let me know, because we have to decide if you want it without wanting everyone to get it.
Yeah, sure.
Um.
If they want it, yeah.
Because I, people can hear.
Better, right?
It's better.
Better for the.
Yeah, well, uh, but you just have to um. Be careful one, right, that it's always on.
Yes.
And then the second.
We must always remember that, yeah.
Needs to get calibrated so that everyone's got it.
Yeah.
Um, the, the mic and the lapel mic have different frequencies and how it's.
Okay.
So you can change it back and forth, once you go one way.
Right.
Um, we'll let, keep it like that. So um.
I think it makes sense, right? People think it here, here.
It's very, the, the, it's just human nature, I think the habit is when you speak to someone.
Like that.
Yeah, right, yeah, it happens.
It's a lot in the council, I'm not just being critical here, but.
Yeah.
Especially with this thing in between you.
Yeah, it's worse.
I use, you put your chair back and then talk.
Right.
But at least they are corded, because you see all the bloopers where people get up and they leave and go to the bathroom, it's still on, right?
Probably have it on a wire.
Can't go any further than this, yeah, right, that's a good thing, yeah.
So if you're comfortable with that, um, we'll move forward with it.
It, it is better, because then you can lean back, yeah, it's otherwise, right, you're always kind of leaning trying to speak.
I will say, I've never had an issue hearing Walker, Peter, when.
What are you trying to say? No, I'm just kidding.
In the, in the two sections that we. I just love hearing your voice, Mark, that's.
Council of each?
Yes.
Do you want to comment, you're, you're remote today, can you?
I'm remote today because I have a cold.
I, I know, but can you hear everyone clearly, especially, I, I would like, uh, perhaps. Charlie to say something.
You like the lapel mic.
I can only hear pieces of you guys, sorry, the, the hearing is not the best.
Well, that's not good.
No, it's not, I can hear you, Mark, interestingly enough, I could hear you perfectly.
Well, the voice from on high, you know, that's how it is.
It bellows.
Mark's good, can you, can you hear Charlie, if he says something?
Charlie?
Is this mic better than the old style mic?
Uh, I don't think so.
So you can't hear him?
No, I can hear him.
Okay.
If he speaks up, I can hear him, I had a problem with Kate earlier and um.
I wasn't on mic.
Okay.
So why, why don't we do this, we'll try it.
Try.
Because I think it's important when people are. Remote, they hear us, I, I hear that a lot, that.
Yes.
Not good if you're having a public meeting and people can hear us.
That's very bad.
Try at least to um improve it.
Yes.
Then worst case, we can back to what it was.
I just got a couple of texts that said this is the best sound they've ever had on these meetings, so.
Oh, well, that's good.
I am stuffed up, so maybe it's just me.
Probably.
All right, that's all I have, um.
All right.
So, thank you.
That's great, thank you very much, special committee reports, do we, other than the, you know, we have the housing advisory housing committee and of course the uh. Senior Community Center, which we have already heard of tonight, any other, we didn't have any other meetings, right, I don't think there were any special meetings, no. Um, all right, council communications. We have anything, folks? Anything we want to say? Um. Nothing.
The only thing I want to mention is.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, just to keep those poor people in Europe in your prayers, it's horrible what they're going through.
Well, that's what I wanted to say, I was curious, um, you know, it's, it's, of course, it's an awful situation for the, for the Ukraine and uh Europe, really. Um, is there something on a townwide level, we have to try and, I don't know.
I know the, the jeweler in town has been collecting and sending things and I know a couple of the churches are taking donations and sending money overseas. Uh, Saint Paul's, I know, was doing something, you know, I read in the bulletin, but um.
I don't.
You know, so I know that individual churches in this community and, you know, New Britain in particular is a huge Polish, you know, population over there as well. And they're sending things overseas, you know.
There's actually, um, on the twenty fifth of March, which I believe is a Sunday, or maybe it's a Saturday, it's at seven PM at the East Berlin. Uh, Lutheran Church.
Okay.
Um, or maybe it's Methodist, I'm sorry, um, but they're having a, a, a prayer hour there for, and invited all the churches in town to go. I'm sure they invite everybody to go too, so that would be.
Oh, okay, well, that's good, okay.
People to be there for that one.
Yeah, yes. Oh, well, relatives over there still, oh.
Who just said, now who's talking, because I can't hear whoever that is.
Ray, Ray.
Oh, okay, all right.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
Yeah, it's terrible, just terrible.
Yeah, the churches have been a great resource, I know that there was a group of individuals, the, the Berlin Equity Action Team that just did a. Clothing and medical supplies drive with, I think it was Saint Joseph, Joseph Hat Church. Um, out of New Britain, I believe, and. Uh, I would, I would say probably we should just keep our ear to the pavement and work with community groups and churches or any other organizations that are. Um, oh. Doing these initiatives, I know, um, I just received an email. It's just came in my box today with the, um, I'm, I'm worked down in Bridgeport and so. The Greater Bridgeport Bar Association is doing a collection for you. And so the Greater Bridgeport Bar Association is doing a collection for Ukraine as well. Um, so I, I guess, you know, anytime we, we get these in our inboxes or we see them on Facebook, um, I, I encourage you all to just share them with as many people as possible. And if anyone's interested in this uh, Greater Bridgeport Bar Association initiative, let me know. And I would be happy to pass on the information. And just to clean up my last one here, so on March twenty-fifth at seven PM at the East Berlin United Methodist Church, which is on one thirty-nine Main Street in East Berlin, at seven o'clock, there will be uh, Interfaith Day for Worldwide Peace there. And uh, you can also make a monetary donation for you, the Ukrainian Relief Fund at that, that juncture too.
But what's, twenty-fifth, what, what time?
March twenty-fifth, seven PM.
Seven PM.
Um, and for anybody out there that's listening, for any information, you can call eight six oh eight two eight five four five zero for more information.
Okay, great, that's good, yeah, you know, I, I, and I've read some stuff about, I know, I know, when sending a lot of supplies, I, I, a couple things I read, said, you know, the, the money is.
Money is the best thing, I, I.
Get over there and.
Disperse it and figure out what they need to do with it, yeah, that's what we've done.
Whatever you want to donate.
Whatever works, whatever works.
Whatever works helps and uh, let's hope that situation comes to a fairly rapid conclusion, if they could agree on anything. But that certainly doesn't look like it, but let's hope, hope so, our heart and prayers go out to them. And uh, let's hope uh, we can, like, the world can resolve it sooner than later. And it's for the benefit of all of us, certainly for the Ukraine people, but the world is a scary place right now, right? All right, anything else from anyone? Okay, so we're down to our acceptance of minutes, we have March first, uh, meeting minutes. Uh, I'll go ahead and take a.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the Tuesday, March first, two thousand twenty-two, on council meeting minutes.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, uh, if there's no uh, changes, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention, any opposed? All right, so moved. So now we will go into our executive session, so we'll go ahead and take a, a motion. Executive session.
Yeah, make a motion to go into executive session. Ending litigations, Connecticut General State Statute, section one, two hundred six, Part B, strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending claims or pending litigation, Kensington Fire District and Worthington Fire District.
So do I need to call in, guys?
Yeah, I'll send you, I'll text you the number, Donna.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll have, obviously, uh, Roche, uh, Mr. D'Onofrio, John Rose.
Gregorin, Micah.
Micah Hearn.
And Jim Hobel will be joining us.
Jim Hobel, okay, all right.
He's, he's online now, okay, thank you.
All right, so second on that, we have a second, Charlie, right?
Second, yeah.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll uh, be offline for a moment while we go into our executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Listening.